Okay, this is Tim Winster, the Town Council. We are now live. Who's talking? Okay.
Tom, can I make a note, please?
What?
Any panelists that have not used the link using the link that was provided to them in their email cannot speak. If you're using audio mode only, you cannot speak. So you need to go back into the email and use the link to get your private PIN.
All right, okay, let's see if we got a forum to begin with.
Okay, Tom?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah.
Tom?
Oh, Lou.
Okay, Louie?
Okay. Mary Ann Rosa?
Here.
Mary? Yeah, Catherine Ramo? Kathleen? Nope, not yet. Case Suplessi? Jonathan Ramsey?
Here.
Anthony Devono?
Here.
Paul Renaldi? Okay, Lou Raz is here. Rachel Ryan?
I'm here.
Okay. Okay, well, we have six. Um. I'll wait for seven thirty-two and then we'll move on.
And then we'll move on.
Uh, Tom, Kathleen is trying to log on right now, so.
Okay. We've got a few things to do. Just give it about a seven thirty-two.
I'm just trying to make sure we're on, Tom.
Yeah, yeah, well, we're on. I just haven't, I just haven't put the meeting in order yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Kathleen, you here yet? Ramo? Case, Case Suplessi, you there? Paul Renaldi? Let's bring this meeting to order. Um, I'm going to, uh, I will say a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call. I've done it already. Kathleen, you here? Case Suplessi? Paul Renaldi? We have six members. We have a forum. Can I have a, uh, a motion to approve the April twentieth, twenty twenty regular meeting?
This is Mary Ann Rosa. I make the motion to approve the minutes of the April twentieth, twenty meeting.
For a second.
Lou Raz is second.
Any changes or additions?
Tom? Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Rachel Ryan? Uh, there's one, there's one typo on page fourteen. Um, and it says down towards the bottom of the page Chairman Thomas Ryan. I'm assuming that's supposed to be Chairman Thomas Nguyen.
Okay.
I don't think he was at the meeting.
Is Lou King here? At least?
I have a, an addition too, Tom. It's Mary Ann.
Okay, um, I'm just trying to make sure that that gets changed. And I guess Sue King is not here. Lisa, are you gonna take, uh, who's gonna take, uh, these, um, these changes, minutes?
Tom, it's Suzapone here. I'm jotting down these changes. I'll make sure Sue King gets them.
Okay, thank you. All right.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, Mary Ann? Next change?
Page four, under the statement that I made. Down to the paragraph which says the finance director and the acting town manager. Prior to that, it should say we requested that. The finance director and acting town manager.
Got that?
Has to insert the two words we requested.
Very good. I have that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And any other changes or additions? I mean, now, what I'm going to do, I'm gonna do a, um, I'm not gonna do a, um, I'm gonna do a vo- a voice vote and we'll do it all together. So on favor, those changes?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All opposed? Yeah.
Oh, good. I'm good. I'm good to go.
Who is this?
It's Case, sorry.
Oh, okay. All right. So we got?
Anne, I'm here too.
Oh, okay, so we got eight. And Paul's not here. Okay, let's, let's continue. All in favor of, uh, um, uh, the, uh, the motion for the approval of minutes of April twentieth, twenty twenty, uh, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Obstain? Or no abstain or opposition? So it's unanimous. Um, so right now, we're gonna, we're gonna go to the subcommittee. Uh, Board of Education, and I'd like to bring in and introduce Dr. Harrison, who will be, um, uh, taking care of, I mean, will be, uh, Dr. Harris, Harrison, all right.
Hello, thank you every, uh, thank you everyone. Good evening, everyone. Uh, this is Dr. Adal Harrison, Superintendent of Schools. Um, and tonight I'll be sharing some information about the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, um, Board of Education budget. I want to acknowledge that we have, uh, a number of our board members on the call, uh, this evening. And, um, part of this work has been put together, of course, in collaboration with the board. Uh, but you may also hear some answers or comments tonight from our board chair, Leslie Crotty, uh, the chair of our finance subcommittee, um, Diane Bristol, and also Tom D'Stazio, who is our, um, uh, business manager. So thank you for this opportunity. This budget represents our plans for the twenty twenty-one, twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, based on the expenses that we anticipated as of this past February. And while we feel really confident that these numbers represent our priorities for next school year, uh, as you can imagine, there are a lot of unknowns, um, for next year related to COVID nineteen as we go forward. And so that's one thing that we've been keeping in mind. I'd like to remind you, we are going through this discussion. I'll be using tonight, um, for our discussion, the, um, the document that was sent along with the, uh, with the, uh, materials for tonight's meeting. I'm looking at the Waterford Schools Board of Education, uh, budget summary. Just then I wanted, um, start by, um, some of our expenses. So looking at our fixed costs. Fixed costs refer to those expenditures that are pretty easy to predict from year to year. Um, and, um, we have them highlighted, looking at our increase from, um, the twenty, um, fiscal year to the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. Um, and so if you look at the first fixed cost under transportation, that increase of about forty-six thousand dollars represents, um, our bus contract with First Student, um, and also with our special education, uh, funding or busing as well. The next category is salaries and benefits. Um, you see an increase of six hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. This is related to our contractual increases from year to year. Um, what we are appreciative of with this number is that, um, our teachers picked up, uh, uh, some of the costs for this by taking a higher percentage, paying a higher percentage of the insurance costs going into next year. And we were able to negotiate that as part of their contract. Um, teachers led that work and our administrators in their new contract also moved forward with that as well. And so, um, that is some of the savings. But we'll talk about the significant savings in just a moment. Um, then you'll see our utilities, an increase of about forty-six thousand dollars, almost forty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, and that's just related to ongoing increases in utility costs from one year to the next. I mean, so that total increase related to our fixed costs is about seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Uh, the next column to the right is the most important column of, of all in this chart. And that is, um, the places where we were able to find savings, uh, in rela- relationship to next school year's budget. So you'll see that we are estimating about five hundred and eighty-two, almost five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in savings in relationship to our retirement incentive. Uh, this is an incentive that we are in negotiations with currently with our teachers' union, uh, offering them a, a retirement package. Uh, and this was something that the union brought to us. And while it's, uh, tough to lose really talented, uh, seasoned teachers, uh, we felt like this is a good opportunity for us going forward, uh, and, um, want to keep that good working relationship with our, uh, teachers' union. So this retirement incentive would save us almost five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, uh, which would then bring our adjusted total, um, for that line of salaries and benefits to just an increase of about ninety-five thousand dollars. When we look at utilities, we are, um, identifying savings in two different places. One is the solar project. Uh, and, uh, many of you know that we have, uh, a solar project at John, uh, Judson and at, um, Swift and also at the high school. Those will be operational going into next fiscal year and we're estimating savings of about forty-nine thousand dollars. And then in relationship to that, um, also our LED project. Uh, this was a project that we completed a number of years ago. Um, but we've been financing the cost of switching over to LED lighting in all of our schools. Um, this will be the first year that we're not paying on that. And so we're seeing, um, all of the savings that, um, uh, for that, and that's about forty-four thousand dollars. And so with those two line items, even though we would be seeing an increase of forty-six thousand dollars, um, in utilities, we're actually saving altogether, um, that forty-six and then cutting by another forty-six thousand dollars. Um, uh, so our adjusted total with our fixed cost expenditures, uh, is about ninety-four thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Um, this really represents our district's focus on, uh, finding areas that we could, um, identify savings and really thinking about the long, um, the long, instead of just making year-to-year decisions, but thinking long-term, how could we find areas of savings? Are there any questions on fixed costs?
No.
Okay, I'll, um, go on to our variable costs. Uh, these are costs, um, year-to-year that vary, um, based on, uh, many external factors. Special education funding is driven by our student population. And so we really have to look at, um, who our students are and what the needs, uh, that they're coming to us with each year. Um, and so this is, uh, these are line items that are often more unpredictable. Uh, they change even throughout the year based on our enrollment and the way that our students' needs change as the year goes on. Some things that we are, um, anticipating for next year is an increase to outplacement costs for special education students. Um, so we work every year to increase the, the amount of student needs that we could handle within the district through in-district programs. Uh, but even with that, there still is often a need to, um, find specialized placement for students whose academic needs can't be met in the, in the district. Um, and so the increased cost that we are anticipating for next year is about six hundred and ten thousand dollars. And that's related to the cost of outplacement tuition and also transportation for those students. Uh, typically, the average cost that we see for, um, students who are being outplaced is about eighty thousand dollars. Um, and so, um, when we look at this next area, um, the RISE program personnel, uh, that really shows, um, some things that we're doing, uh, within the district to try to limit the number of students that we're having to outplace by building some in-district programs. This RISE program is a new program for third through fifth graders, um, with emotional and behavioral needs. We, um, we have this program, uh, that we put in place for this current school year, um, at John Trumbull for our pre-K through second grade students. A number of years ago, we had this place, uh, this program put in place at the middle school for our sixth, seventh, eighth grade students. And so this new program then becomes the bridge for that, for those two programs at those two schools. Uh, staffing for this program, the RISE program, um, requires us to have a social worker, um, and an additional, uh, special education teacher. The program will be housed at Polk. And, um, we are anticipating having, uh, no less than five, uh, four students as a part of that program. So when we look at the potential cost savings, if we were to have, um, just two students as part of that program, uh, we would be saving about forty-four thousand dollars in outplacement costs. Um, but if you look at having four students in that program, which is what we're anticipating for next year, that savings jumps all the way to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And so if you think about us not having this program and needing to outplace those four students, you would see that a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars being added to that six hundred and ten thousand dollars for outplacement costs above. And so this program is really a good opportunity for us to, uh, again, uh, realize savings for next fiscal year, but also in the years to come. The last item that you see here under variable, um, um, cost is related to our special education personnel. And I'll dig a little bit deeper into sped personnel in just a few minutes. But, um, here I'm highlighting that, uh, th- there's a need for an additional special education teacher at Swift. Uh, this is required based on the increases of the number of sped students that we have in seventh grade. And you'll see the cost associated with that new position, uh, about fifty-eight thousand dollars. And then also, um, uh, an additional speech teacher. So this speech teacher will be, um, serving students across the district. Um, and those, uh, both of those positions, the speech teacher and the sped teacher, are based on students' individual plans and what their individual needs are, particularly looking at our special education students. Um, and while we are, uh, we don't have a sudden influx of the number of speech students that we have within district, what we know is that as we continue to spread our resources thin and not bring on additional staff to meet our students' needs, then we run the risk of, um, losing faith in our, from our community, um, in providing really quality instruction of our students, in particularly, uh, in particular, our speech students. And so you'll see the total amount for those variable, uh, costs to be, uh, for eight hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-six, uh, dollars. Any questions related to variable costs?
I have a question. This is Mary Ann Rosen. Um, doctor, the document I have in front of me has a hundred and fifteen thousand for the RISE program, not a hundred and twenty-five.
You are correct. So the, the, um, the cost for the RISE program with those two positions, you'll see in that column all the way to the right, that's, those two positions cost a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is what we'll save by having four students in our program. And so when we create a new in-district sped program, you'll see that, um, we need two staff members to run that program. If we increase the number of students in that program, it's not like that's requiring us to have more staff members. Um, and so then the, the savings that we can realize, um, a- actually, uh, starts to grow exponentially. So with just a few students in the program, right, yeah, we would save about forty-four. But with, um, just four students, that would bring that savings up to about one twenty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Putty Chair Lou Razza. The average outplacement cost is eighty thousand dollars per student. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And we look at that average, um, uh, to be quite honest, every student's needs are obviously very different. Um, and so that's a good average based on, um, taking the total number of students that we have outplaced on an annual basis and, and kind of splitting the cost. But we have some students, honestly, whose, um, whose costs, uh, for educating them, um, are, are, are much higher. And, you know, part of the responsibility of the Board of Education is to meet whatever those, um, our students, special education students' needs are when they live in town. And so in a lot of cases, uh, we may even have students who moved to us, um, with our, from another town with already having high costs, um, associated with outplacement.
Thank you.
The next page, um, we, uh, uh, dig into our enrollment data. And this is really looking at our, um, changes in demographics over a ten-year period. This is really important for us as we're thinking about planning, um, in the future and how to allocate our, um, our funds in a really responsible way to look at what the potential needs are of our students as we're going forward, based on how they've been changing over time. And so I have three categories of students listed in this, um, in this table. It's our free and reduced lunch students, our English learners, those students who are, um, where English is their, uh, second language, and then our special education students that we were just talking about. So when you look over a ten-year period, let's just start with our free and reduced lunch students. We see, um, uh, an increase, uh, more, more than doubling of the number of free and reduced lunch students that we have going from fifteen point four percent free and reduced lunch in two thousand nine, ten school year to about thirty-seven point three percent in this current school year. That's a, a significant change over time. And while, um, while I'm not saying, uh, by referring to free and reduced lunch, I'm not saying that, that there's a, a cost associated with paying for lunch, because that's actually part of their, uh, a federal program. But, uh, what we know is that when students come to us, um, with more economic needs, those students also, um, typically have more educational needs. And so it, it requires us to shift the way that we're using our people resources, uh, on a daily basis in all, in all of our schools. We also look at an increase in the number of English language learners that we have going from about one point eight percent, um, of our total population ten years ago to about four point five percent of our students. Um, and with that, that means that, um, we've had to increase the number of staff members that we have in the district, uh, completely dedicated to working with our, um, students who are learning English as a second language. Uh, there are some really tight state requirements and federal requirements about how to meet those students' needs. Um, and so we want to make sure that we're always tracking that so that we could plan for the future to see how those dynamics are changing. And then the last area, and this is an area that we've talked about before, you'll see a, uh, pretty sizable increase in the number of special education students that we have, um, uh, that, and the increase in that number over the, this ten-year period. So we've gone from about ten point eight percent, um, uh, special education students to about fifteen point two percent of our total population are students, um, who require specialized instruction. Now, this includes all students, so this doesn't mean that fifteen percent of those students are then outplaced. A lot of those needs are being, uh, we're able to meet right there in the classroom, um, with teacher support and also with, uh, with power support. Um, what you'll see when you look at the increase in the number of sped students, um, when you look at the number of special education teachers, um, that, uh, last line, second or second to last line from the bottom, you'll see that ten years ago, we had thirty-two point three sped students. And despite increasing the number of sped students by, uh, sixty, yeah, sixty, um, we now have less sped teachers than we had ten years ago. And so, uh, while the number of students with needs are increasing, um, our staffing has not increased with it when we're looking at our teacher population. Uh, these three categories, I pulled them out as part of this chart because, uh, this is, uh, these three categories together, the state defines them as, uh, high-needs students. And so what we know as a district is that with our high-needs students, we can anticipate, um, having to allocate more resources and design more specialized instruction in order to meet those students' needs. The two tables below that, um, Table Two and Table Three are really just focused on special education students. Um, and so again, it's just another way of representing, uh, Table Two is another way of representing, um, the numbers above. But you'll see on that line graph kind of a steady increase over, um, the last five or six years of the number of special education students that we have. Uh, and this is all categories. Uh, there are twelve categories that students can qualify for special education in. And, um, these are all of those students together. Table Three pulls out our students with autism and our students, um, whose category is emotional disturbance. Uh, it's important to pull those two categories out because when we're thinking about students who may need, uh, to be outplaced or additional, um, services or, um, specialized programs that we are creating in the district, um, these are the two categories of students, um, with the, uh, most significant needs and this, uh, represent the most significant challenges as far as designing instruction that's, um, tailored to them. And you'll see that we've been on a pretty steady increase in the number of students with emotional disturbance and then, um, a, a steady increase after a small dip with, uh, the number of students with autism. As we're thinking about next year and thinking about what life looks like for us as a district after COVID nineteen, um, what, uh, a lot of the current research is showing us is that, um, this, we can anticipate some of these numbers, um, increasing based on, uh, the number of students right now across our country who are dealing with traumatic experiences related to COVID nineteen. Uh, and so as a district, it's important for us not to just wait, uh, but to really position ourselves and think ahead of, um, the ways that we can meet those students' needs.
Dr. Harrison, can you hear me?
Yes.
Case, Case Suplessi, I have a question.
Yes.
Is our special education people, uh, are they, is that representative of all towns in Connecticut? Or is it just our town? Or, I mean, there seems to be quite an increase from three fifty to, it doesn't sound like it, but it is, three fifty to four ten. Is that, is that normal throughout the state or is it just our area?
That's a great question. You know, one of the things that we do, um, when you're looking at special education numbers and how you are identifying students, there's a lot of federal guidelines and state guidelines around over-identifying students. And so you want to make sure that as your numbers are increasing, that it is, um, that, uh, it's increasing, uh, relative to what's happening across the state and across the country. And so when we look at these numbers in comparison to other districts, uh, not just surrounding us, but also statewide, Case, you're exactly right, that it really is representative of some of the changes in education period.
Really? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? So I'm gonna go on to, um, to, uh, our new positions. You'll, uh, notice that even though these are categorized as new positions, I'll talk a little bit about, uh, how some of these positions are restorations. Um, and so these, these new positions really represent three big areas. And that's our focus on security, um, state or federal mandates, uh, and then also employment opportunities, um, for our students as they, um, are leaving high school. So I want to jump in and talk about the three armed security officers. Last year this time, I was talking a lot with, um, our community and district, uh, and, uh, even with Town Council about bringing on, um, one armed security guard, uh, who would be shared between our three elementary schools. Uh, and so really grateful for the support of Town Council and the support of the community in being able to establish that position for this year. It has been wonderful to have, um, Officer Chip, who is shared between our three elementary schools. He's a retired police officer, um, from Nagatuck and comes with a lot of experience. Um, we currently have a full-time, uh, school resource officer at, um, uh, Swift Middle School and then also a full-time resource officer at the high school. Uh, for next year, it is our goal to have, um, a full-time, uh, security, armed security officer at each of our elementary schools. Um, these positions really represent our community's ongoing focus on safety and, uh, a focus that began long before I came to Watertown. Uh, but when I got here, the board really expressed, um, that safety was a priority for us as a district and as a community. Um, and so these positions, uh, represent our board's commitment to our student safety. So you'll see that, um, we have, uh, three armed security guards so that we'll have a full-time, um, retired officer at Judson and a full-time retired officer at Polk. We see, um, positions and also the one that, but we see these two positions as a way to, um, connect with some of our retired officers right through Watertown. Uh, and so that's a good opportunity for us going forward. And I know there's been a number of people who have reached out and expressed some interest. Uh, so two of those positions would be working during the school day at our, uh, elementary school to make sure that they're fully covered. The other would be, um, a, a full-time position, um, security officer position at the high school in the evenings. When we look at the amount of use that our high school, um, gets in the evenings from community programs, park and rec, um, countless number of swimmers who are in and out of that building. Uh, currently, that building is completely open and unsecured. Uh, and while we are always, um, really diligent about having, um, some off-duty officers when we have a big event like a basketball game or, um, a huge volleyball game, uh, it's really important for us to have, um, someone there to secure that entrance um, so that we are able to keep our entire community safe. So while this is a additional position at the high school, uh, we really see this being, um, a, a, a position that would benefit our entire- that would benefit our entire, um, school community, um, and Watertown community. The second position that you see on that list is the addition of a PE health teacher. Uh, the state, uh, legislation changed recently, um, and is required, we are required to provide our high school students with an additional, um, health credit before they can graduate. Uh, and in order to fulfill that, um, mandate, we have to have another teacher, um, another health teacher in the building who could teach those courses. Um, our goal going forward is to hire a PE, um, a dual-certified PE and health teacher. Uh, that gives us a lot more flexibility with that position of how we can use it. Uh, but this is another one of those examples of, that you hear us talking about a lot, uh, which is, uh, uh, unfunded, unfunded mandate from the state. And so while this mandate, um, has changed from the state of, of what the graduation requirements are, there's no additional money that comes along with it. And so, um, that's why we are adding this position, um, to the budget. The next position is a foods and consumer science teacher. Um, that's a fancy way for saying a home ec teacher. That's what we called it when I was in, um, school. Uh, we see this position as being a job builder, uh, a real opportunity to introduce our students to culinary arts um, and making them, uh, more employable as we're graduating our students. Currently, we have, uh, about 200 students enrolled for those courses next year um, that have expressed interest in that. And so, uh, thi- this is a position that got a lot of, um, good, um, excitement and feedback from our students and from our parents and our, uh, community as a whole. Uh, this is actually not a new position, but it's a restoration of a position. Um, this program was cut several years ago, um, uh, during, uh, very lean budget times. Uh, and so despite these being lean budget times again, um, it's a, for us to have these opportunities for our students. Um, one of the things that we think about with, um, putting together a, a comprehensive high school is, uh, providing our students with lots of options because we know that, um, we could potentially lose students to go to other magnet schools that might have similar programs. Uh, and so this really gives our students an opportunity to explore some of those interests while staying, uh, right within our district. Um, this position is also a nice tie-in to the, um, foods and consumer science program that we have at the middle school. So currently, um, students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, um, kind of get their feet wet with, um, learning how to cook and to sew and some of those traditional home ec things that we know as adults are so, uh, such important skills for them to have. So having this program at the high school allows them to build on top of that, um, as they explore new career options. The last position here, um, is also not a brand-new position, rather, it is a, a restoration of a position. That's a network coordinator, and this will be a position, um, that will focus, um, district-wide. Currently, our district has two network coordinators who are responsible for 2,000-plus devices. Uh, and we have seen this year in particular how important it is for us to have, um, proper staffing when it comes to our network coordinators. So, um, you'll recall earlier this year, we, um, uh, were hit with a ransomware incident, um, where our files were locked. Uh, and it's so important to have an additional, some additional staffing present to assist with our cybersecurity. And then also in a time when, um, all of our teachers are teaching through distance learning, um, we are seeing the number of devices, um, increase, uh, year over year. Uh, and so that's a really, really, um, uh, it's a lot of devices for a very small number of people. Just to give you a little bit of, um, context, um, so we have two network coordinators and about 2,000-plus devices. Uh, I know the town, I think, also has two network coordinators and about 150 devices. Uh, and so we are really, really in need of, of this position. We see this being, um, uh, uh, getting a lot of real bang for our buck, not just with our students', um, use, uh, increase in, but also improving our cybersecurity, uh, and helping us to build on all of the lessons that we learned, um, this past year related to, uh, networks. Any questions about these positions? Okay, um, our last, um, uh, few tables are, uh, related to our state funding and federal funding. And just before we get into that, uh, um, we have, uh, Tom DiStazio here on, in the meeting. I wanted him to just take a moment and talk about, um, uh, local funding in relationship to state and federal.
Uh, thanks, Dr. Harrison. Uh, good night, um, good evening, everybody. I'm just going to go through, uh, each of the main categories of funding that, uh, that the Board of Education relies upon for its operations. So I'm going to start with federal funding. This makes up about 2% of the overall funding of the Board of Education. Uh, for next year, we're projecting that at about a million dollars. This is based on what we received in the fiscal year nineteen twenty year, so that is the current year. And the reason we've kept that consistent is when we look back at historic costs uh, and historic funding from the federal government, uh, over the past 10 years, that number has stayed relatively flat on a year-to-year basis. And so in anticipation of next year, we've decided to keep that flat again. Uh, these funds, while they are a, a source of funding for the Board of Education, they are not, uh, used to offset the general fund and they have no impact on the general fund. So this is aside from the forty-six point eight million dollar, uh, general fund budget that we've proposed. Uh, the federal funds are restricted for specific purposes such as special education. Uh, moving on, our, uh, next source of funding would be state funds. This makes up about 26% of the overall funding for, for the Board of Ed. Uh, and it comes in, in two primary vehicles, uh, one of which is the excess cost funding that we receive from the state to offset special education costs. Uh, this is projected to be about $900,000 for next year. And, uh, what this is, is, um, i- i- it's funding that we receive throughout the course of the year, and it goes directly to the Board of Education. So we receive the funds, it doesn't go through the town, uh, and it is used to offset our special education costs. So this, uh, $900,000 of projected funding is factored into the forty-six point eight million dollar budget that we have proposed. So this $900,000 is, is taking that, that number and bringing it down to where it is. Uh, the second vehicle of state funding that we receive is education cost sharing funding or ECS funding. This is a little different in that it comes to the town from the state and it doesn't, uh, uh, it doesn't actually come to the Board of Education, but it is sent to the municipality in order to offset the general fund expenditures that we proposed in our general fund budget. Based on the governor's proposed budget, we're looking at for next year about eleven point eight million dollars in ECS funding. Uh, so that is not part of our proposed budget. However, in, in considering, um, where the money comes from for the forty-six point eight million dollar general fund budget that we are proposing, uh, this funding, this eleven point eight million dollars would, would make up the state-funded portion of that general fund budget. Uh, and so that segues into our third, uh, category of funding for the Board of Education. That would be local funding that, uh, we rely on, uh, from the town of Watertown taxpayers. This makes up about 72% of our overall funding. Uh, if you take the forty-six point eight million dollar general fund proposed budget and take the eleven point eight million dollars from the state through the ECS grant that we would anticipate per the governor's proposed budget, that leaves us with about $35 million, uh, proposed from the local government.
Thanks, Tom. One of the things to note as we're, um, looking at these, uh, two tables, looking at state funding over a 10-year period and also looking at federal funding, um, over a 10-year period, is that, um, despite the increases that we see in the number of high need students that we have, despite the sharp increases that we see in the number of special education students that we have, um, funding from the state and federal funding, uh, remain fairly flat. Um, and I will say that having worked in other districts, moving from 15% free and reduced lunch to 37% free and reduced lunch in 10 years is a huge increase. Um, that, uh, typically, when you see an increase like that, you would see it happening a lot more gradually over maybe a 20-year period. Um, and what you would like to be able to see is that some of the federal and state funds that, uh, come with that sharp increase in high need students, that you would see that represented, um, in the budget, but we don't see that here. Uh, and as Tom mentioned, that funding, um, remains fairly flat. Um, now, while, you know, you'll hear a lot of other districts right now, uh, when they're in the middle of talking about what school may look like for next year with COVID-19 and, um, social distancing requirements and all of that, uh, there are a lot of districts that are, um, scrambling to make some cuts to their budget and to try to figure that out. Um, you know, it's a challenge for us because we've done a lot of that work already, um, prior to this budget year, um, that other places are just starting these conversations. We have, um, historically found lots of areas of savings and, um, and allowed some of those cuts to, um, we've cut pretty deep. And so, um, we're, we're really at that place where, um, when we consider possibilities for additional cuts, uh, it's really limited in the, in the, the place for us to, um, to find those areas where it would have a significant impact on what student learning is like. Uh, one area that we looked at and considered is, um, you know, looking at our average class size. So average class size for kindergarten right now is, is at 19 for this current school year. Um, we are, uh, are really in a unique position this current school year. We had to, um, add an, an additional kindergarten, uh, which meant another teacher or those class sizes would have been, um, in the mid twenties. And to be honest, we, it would have been hard to keep, uh, kindergarten teachers there with 24 little bodies in the classroom. That's really tough. Um, as we're looking at next year, um, we are, uh, even with COVID-19, we have more students already registered for kindergarten at this point than we did last year. Uh, and so we're anticipating those numbers continuing to go up. Uh, when we look at class size for, um, first and second grade, we're, um, between 20, uh, 21 or 22. Um, and then that goes up to about 24 by the time we get to fifth grade. One of the things that we're considering, um, and that might be a possibility for next year as we're, um, trying to reopen schools, is there could be some social distancing requirements that would, um, push us to have to reduce class size. Uh, and so we don't want to put ourselves in a position where we're increasing class size um, in order to, um, to, uh, reduce our budget and then having to come back in, um, or increase class sizes in order to reduce our budget, but then having to come back and to reduce even further than we already are. So, um, that's one of the things that's really important to, um, to note. We've been kind of looking at this budget process as before COVID and after COVID. Um, and so prior to the closing of schools, I was able to present this budget to our community, uh, at our PTO meeting, uh, and, um, we need a lot of support. There was a lot of support in particular around the, um, the focus on security, uh, which I wasn't surprised about because that was a lot of what we heard last year with that new position. And even then, people wanting to say, you know, why, why we started with one, let's go for three automatically. Uh, and so there's a lot of good support about that. Um, and so that's all I have for tonight. I want to just take a moment and say on behalf of our students, our, uh, families, our staff, um, of course, all of our board members who are a part of this meeting. I really appreciate the town council at your last meeting for moving forward, um, this budget as presented. Uh, and I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Okay. Anyone in the board? The council, I'm sorry. There's none. Uh, Chairman Karate, um, um, would you like to say something I understand? Uh, Leslie?
Thank you. Um, I just want to thank Dr. Harrison for, um, presenting and all of the assistance of Tom DiStazio and Diane Bristol as our budget and finance chair and the rest of the Board of Ed. Um, I think Dr. Harrison, uh, made all of the important points to the budget in his summary. You all have received the entire packet, um, that was sent out to the town council in March. Please feel free to reach out, um, if you have any other questions related to this, um, or any of the budget matters between now and, uh, the public hearing because we're all here, um, to work together on that. And I just want to thank Dr. Harrison for that presentation this evening, and that's all I have.
Tom, this is Mary Ann. Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Uh, Dr. Harrison, if between now and the public hearing, you receive any directives from the state with regard to next year, i.e. size of classes or, uh, length of school day or, or anything, uh, would you be kind enough to let us know so that we take that into consideration as we look into next year's costs?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and I will say that, um, I know that the, there's a lot of conversations happening at the state about what, uh, reentry looks like. We put together in our district a reentry, um, team, um, that could talk about, um, what, what are some of those specific needs related to Watertown and working with, um, you know, community agencies, also our, um, local health department. Uh, but then also, um, that same work is happening at the state level as well, um, with them getting lots of input from community members through our regional education centers. And so, um, as that, that information gets processed and then shared back to superintendents, I'll be sure to, um, keep you posted on what that may look like as we go forward.
One, one final question if I could. I, I don't imagine that every special ed student got the services that they normally would receive at, at school then session. Is there a possibility that we're going to have to make up some of those services? Uh, not just go forward with service, but conceivably make up so many hours or, or so many skills, um, which would be in addition to what you planned for next year as a normal year?
That's a, that's a really great question. And to be honest, it is probably the, the question that for us as superintendents, um, is the, the one that we, we talk about the most. And that is, how do we plan for, um, wh- what you're referring to is compensatory services? So when there's a gap in what that normal service delivery looks like, um, based on what's in a student's individual plan, um, you have to make those services up. Um, so, uh, this will obviously be an ongoing conversation for us as a state, what that looks like. Um, you can imagine that this same conversation is happening in districts all around the country that are experiencing, um, school closings and trying to figure this all out with distance learning. I will say that I am anticipating there being, um, uh, uh, a, a significant focus on compensatory services, looking at our, um, next year's budget. And, um, it, it, to be honest, Mary Ann, it's the thing that probably keeps me up at night the most, uh, just trying to think about how to, how to plan for that and what that will look like, uh, as we go into the future.
Yeah, because we haven't budgeted any money for that extra service. You know, we're right at, at bare bones as it is. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to add to that, um, that we may be looking at having to do that, you know, if we're allowed to open schools this summer. Um, we're, you know, having to do that right away come July, um, in the extended year program and, and start that right away. So, um, you know, the commissioner will be joining the governor on news conference tomorrow, the education commissioner. So, um, I have a sense that we might be hearing a little bit more about when school might be opening. Uh, we'll have a better idea of how soon those types of services that you're talking about, Mary Ann, will have to start.
Thank you. Let us know whatever you find out, if you would, please.
Absolutely.
Any other council questions, statements? Board of Education members? Okay, I'd like to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Harrison for, uh, for this, um, opportunity to listen to your budget. And, uh, we will be talking soon.
Thank you.
I'm going to move on to new business. Uh, can I play motions of transfer of funds?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds between line items.
Have a second. Any discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same, the opposition or sentences, it's a, a unanimous vote? Uh, okay, can I have a motion adjourned?
So moved, Mary Ann.
Second, all, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, people. We will talk in another couple weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Stay safe, folks.
Thank you.